Okay, councilors.
Thanks.
We are now live on YouTube. WCAC, I guess you could start as well. Just quickly before we start the meeting, who is 781-883? You want me to say the rest of it, or do you want to just tell me who you are?
Oh, it's Justin Barrett.
Okay, this is Justin Barrett. Okay, I'm now going to start recording the meeting, so Paul, I'll turn it over to you, I guess, you and Bob. I can, or you can unmute yourself in the left-hand corner?
All right, am I unmuted now?
You are unmuted. I don't know if Paul is. Paul, are you unmuted?
I am at this point. Do you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Waltham. The Waltham City Council is meeting remotely on Monday, April 13th, 2020, at 7:30 PM. The clerk will call the roll.
George J. Darcy III.
Present.
Karen Dunn.
Present.
Sean T. Durkey.
Present.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Present.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Present.
Anthony LaFosse.
Present.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Present.
Christine A. Mackin.
Present.
John J. McLaughlin.
Present.
Kathleen B. McMenamin.
Present.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Present.
Jonathan Paz.
Present.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Present.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Present.
President Paul J. Brasco.
Present.
Fifteen present, Mr. President.
All rise, while the city clerk recites the council prayer.
Almighty God, we ask thy guidance in all our deliberations. Please remain standing while the president of the city council leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing, Councillor Randy LeBlanc, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to ask that we take a moment of silence for our veterans and troops fighting for our freedom all over the world. In addition, I would like to extend this moment to all the first responders, medical staff, and nurses assisting all those in need with the COVID virus. All of our thoughts also go out to the people who are affected and negatively impacted, and a special thanks to all of the volunteers from Healthy Waltham, Food for Free, Boston Area Gleaners, Food Link, Loving Spoonfuls, Hannah Fids, and Costco, and all of the elected officials, including the mayor, who volunteered on Saturday on loading, bagging, and passing out food to over 500 families in Waltham that were in need and affected by this disease, this virus. Thank you.
Moment of silence, please. You may be seated. On behalf of the city council, I'd also like to take this opportunity to express our condolences and sincere sympathy to former council president Diane LeBlanc on the loss of her mother Ellie over this past week. This meeting is being transmitted live on Waltham City YouTube channel and the Waltham Community Access Mac channel, Channel 43 for Verizon subscribers, Channel 98 for Comcast subscribers, and Channel 15 for RCN subscribers. First matter of business before the Waltham City Council on Monday, April 13th, 2020, is the meetings' approval of the minutes for the meetings of March 9th, 2020, and March 23rd of 2020. Wish of the city council with regards.
Mr. President, Councilman here, I would like to move collectively the approval of both sets of meeting, if that's possible.
Council McMenamin makes a motion to act on the matters collectively, and the motion to act on matters collectively, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it, the matter is.
And I'd like to make a motion for approval of both sets of minutes.
Council McMenamin makes a motion for approval of the minutes of 392020 and 3232020 on the motion for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it.
Aye.
For those of you watching on your computer screens, as you can see the list of participants, to the right-hand side, you can see that there's 25 participants in this evening's meeting. If you see to the bottom of the right of that, it says raise hand if you want to be identified and recognized by the president or the chairperson holding the meeting. We ask that you hit that button to be recognized. The clerk will continue with communications from the mayor.
The mayor respectfully requests approval of an appropriation of funds totaling $169,921.50 to purchase 150 Dell Microsoft Windows 7 desktop units for city departments. Mr. O'Coin will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Heard of the finance committee.
The mayor respectfully requests approval of an appropriation totaling $237,904 for the purchase of furniture fixtures and equipment for the Moody Street Fire Station project. Chief McInnis will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Heard of the committee of the whole.
The mayor respectfully requests approval of the appointment of Catherine D. Lockman, five High Rock Circle Waltham, as an assistant city solicitor to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of attorney Frank Craig. City Solicitor Servone and attorney Lockman will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
In accordance with the City Charter 3.3 and Rule 42 of the Waltham City Council, the city council should conduct a personal interview of all new appointees. The interview shall be held no fewer than six days of the date of the original presentation to the city council. No confirmation of any appointee shall be voted on until six days after the completion of that interview. That being said, the matter referred to the committee of the whole.
The mayor respectfully requests approval to go forward with a purchase and sales agreement regarding the property at 89-91 Maple Street in accordance with the terms set forth in her communication to the city council dated April 9, 2020. RE 89 to 91 Maple Street submitted herewith.
Heard of the committee of the whole.
The mayor respectfully requests approval to go forward with an agreement to purchase the UMass land and buildings on Beaver Street in accordance with the terms set forth in her communication to the city council dated April 9th, 2020. RE UMass Farms submitted herewith. Assistant city solicitor Luke Stanton and the mayor will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Let the record reflect that Councilor Randy LeBlanc recuses himself with regards to this matter. Refer to the committee of the whole. Clerk, continue.
The mayor respectfully requests approval of a financing transaction totaling $3420,000 towards the $17420,000 acquisition cost of the UMass Field Station and Farm property. These funds will supplement the previous appropriation of CPA funds of $13,750,000, Council Order Number 34614 approved on November 12, 2019, and $250,000, Council Order Number 34656 approved on December 10, 2019. Assistant city solicitor Luke Stanton and the mayor will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Let the record reflect that Councilor Randy LeBlanc recuses himself with regards to this matter, refer the matter to the committee of the whole.
The mayor respectfully requests acceptance of a gift of sanitizers distilled by Fabrizia Spirits LLC, Salem, New Hampshire. The mayor will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Council LaCava makes a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter without committee reference on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, the matter is before us, Council LaCava. Does it go wish to move approval?
It is, I do believe the mayor's on the line if she does wish to speak on this matter. If not, I do wish to make that motion for approval.
Council LaCava makes a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter from an off-committee member. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Mayor, would you like to address this matter at all?
I would just like to thank on all of these gifts, the citizens, Omastriani, the Capital Services, Home Depot, for all of the things that they're doing for the COVID-19, so we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We truly appreciate all of the assistance. So many of the companies and businesses, organization, and people have donated to the city their time, energy, and efforts. Council LaCava makes a motion to approve of the matter. On the motion for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rule calls required.
George J. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMenamin.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the matter. Clerk, continue with number eight.
Mayor respectfully requests acceptance of a gift of 10,000 surgical gloves from Ron Sin-Carter Jr. and Anthony Sin-Carter, Principals of Capital Services Lexington Street, Waltham, for first responders, public works, health department, and other city workers. The mayor will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Council LaCava makes a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter without committee reference on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? There being none, Council LaCava.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I do want to just make a point to this item, along with the previous item and the next two, to make sure that we do, as a customary, get thank you notes out to all of these individuals who have been gracious enough to donate such items, and on that, I make the motion for approval.
On the motion for approval by Council LaCava, on the motion for approval, clerk, call the roll.
George J. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMenamin.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the gift. Clerk, continue with number nine.
The mayor respectfully requests acceptance of a gift of masks and gloves for our first responders from Home Depot. Councillor LaFosse can answer questions regarding this request.
Council LaCava makes a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter without committee reference on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the matter is before us, Council LaCava.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I do believe the Ward One councillor, Mr. LaFosse, would like to make a statement on this.
Council LaFosse, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take a moment to personally thank Peter McGlashan, who's a manager at Home Depot, and Donna Rapley, who's the operations manager. Home Depot has donated 232 3M performance respirators that when working with Chief McInnis, we were able to equip every one of our firefighters with their own respirator, with the remainder going to the police department, and they were also able to equip us with 18,000 gloves. So I just wanted to thank them on their efforts to continue to help our first responders during this pandemic.
Thank you, Council LaFosse. On the motion by Councilor LaCava for approval, on the motion for approval, rule calls required.
George J. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMenamin.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien. Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the gift from Home Depot. Clerk will continue with number 10.
The mayor respectfully requests acceptance of a grant in the amount of $25,314 from Mass Health Officers Association to be used for the immediate hiring of nurses, data management staff, and supplies related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The mayor will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Council LaCava makes a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter without committee reference on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? There being none, the matter is before us, Council LaCava, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, at this time, I would like to make a motion to hear from our committee members, the mayor, and let her explain this, and then I would like to make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Council. The motion is to hear from off-committee members. On the motion to suspend the rules to hear from off-committee members, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. The mayor, Madam Mayor, if you would like to address number 10 of the $25,314 grant.
So there's one, and then I filed a late-filed communication for another grant. It's the same thing, but it's a different amount of money. The other amount is $24,757, and it's basically from the state through the Mass Health Officers Association, and one of the most difficult things that is happening is the tracing of the individual. So for example, if an individual tests positive for COVID-19, then you have to interview all of the people, not only the one that tests positive, but all the contacts. As a result of that, we have been, you know, put out a request to hire nurses and get the data. So the faster you get that data, the faster you can put those people in self-quarantine to prevent the spread of the virus. So I would like to thank Mass Health Officers Association, health offices, as well as Commonwealth for these grant funds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the motion by Council LaCava for approval of $25,314 from Mass Health Officers Association for the use of the immediate hiring of nurses for data management and staff supplies for COVID-19 pandemic, on the motion for approval, roll call.
George J. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMenamin.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the grant. Clerk will continue. Madam Vice President.
I apologize, I'm losing parts, bits, and pieces of my window here, so I could not find the part to raise my hand. Do we have to accept a late-filed communication regarding an additional component of this matter this evening?
We do, Madam Dean. It's going to come under the, we're going to finish with number 11 out of the communications of the mayor, and a late-filed communication will come in, actually, there's two late-filed communications that will appear before us. As the mayor just clearly stated, we have an additional late-filed communication of the $24,757, which will come up in just two more items.
Thank you very much. I'll wait until that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Dean. Clerk, continue with number 11.
The mayor respectfully requests approval of a funding allotment totaling $103,477 for cable access funds, Verizon PEG support, to be paid to the Waltham Community Access Corporation for studio equipment, field equipment, and the last phase of the studio lighting equipment. A representative of WCAC will be available to answer questions regarding this request.
Heard of the committee of the whole.
Late-filed communications. The Community Preservation Committee has requested that its approval of the mayor's request for $1 million in CPA emergency housing assistance funds be added to the April 13th, 2020 docket.
Council Darcy makes a motion to accept a late-filed communication. The motion to accept a late-filed communication, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or object? There being none, this matter referred to the committee of long-term debt.
All right.
Clerk will continue with the next late-filed communication.
The mayor respectfully requests acceptance of another grant from Mass Health Officers Association in the amount of $24,757. The mayor has requested that this communication be filed with communication number 10 above on the docket.
Vice President McMenamin makes a motion to accept the late-filed communication with regards to the Mass Health Officers Association, $24,757. The motion to accept the late-filed communication, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or object? There being none, the matter is before us. Council McMenamin makes a motion to suspend the rules to act on this matter without committee reference on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or object? There being none, Council McMenamin makes a motion for approval of the grant from the Mass Health Officers Association in the amount of $24,757. On the motion for approval, vote will be taken by, call the roll.
George J. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn.
Yes.
Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMenamin.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the grant. For recessing into committee meetings, Council Randy LeBlanc makes a motion to discharge a matter from committee in the Public Works and Public Safety Committee. The motion is to discharge the matter with regards to the traffic mitigation. On the motion to discharge the matter, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or object? There being none, Council LeBlanc, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to point out that, you know, currently at the moment, there is no traffic in our city, and business is pretty much at a standstill, and during peak times, a lot, National Grid and Eversource, they do system upgrades, which gives a lot of blackouts to a lot of the businesses, and we get a lot of complaints on Moody Street. So what I'd like to do is make a request that Eversource and National Grid attend the next public works meeting, so that we can discuss the potential of them doing the system upgrades while the businesses are pretty much at a low.
You've all heard a sense of the request. On the request. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or object? There being none, we'll refer the matter back to, the request is approved, and if you'd put that in writing and submit that to the clerk, so they could submit that to Eversource and National Grid, and we will place the matter back into the Public Works, Public Safety Committee. Refer that matter back to the Public Works, Public Safety Committee. Okay, we have reached the committee meetings. As you know, we had called this meeting a special meeting of the Waltham City Council, Ward Council Committee Council. My point in doing that was to address any emergency issues or matters of significance with time sensitivity. It was not my intent to hold every single meeting, but if there is a wish of a particular chairperson to do so, we can do so at this time. We will be holding a regular scheduled meeting, committee meeting night, next Tuesday evening due to the holiday on Monday. It is the meeting of April 21st, and we will come out with the time schedule for each of those committees. That being said, next, as I said, Tuesday evening will be a regular scheduled committee evening. Is there any chairs of any committees that wish to have a meetings be convened at this time this evening, other than the matters that were referred to the committee of the whole, which will meet immediately following the recess of the city council? Is there any other chairpersons that wish to address or convene a meeting of any of the standing committees? There being none. The Waltham City Council will now recess into committee of the whole, with Vice President McMenamin serving as the chair, as always, of the committee of the whole, and I believe Mr. Centafanti is with us to be the clerk of that committee. So Council McMenamin makes a motion that the Waltham City Council stand in recess for the committee of the whole to take place at this time. On the motion to recess, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Or object? There being none, the Waltham City Council will stand in adjournment, and the Waltham City Council Committee of the Whole will take over from this point. Madam Dean and Vice President Kathleen McMenamin will take over at this point. Council McMenamin.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Council Brasco. Before we, we are by ordinance required to wait until 8 o'clock, and with two minutes remaining, I just want to make sure, I know, I think I know the items that we will be discussing this evening, so I want to make sure that the participants are already available for participation, along with the entire membership of the city council. Is the mayor available?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Chief McInnis, are you available?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Auditor Centafanti, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Chairman of the CPC, Mr. Barrett, in case questions are needed from you, are you available?
I am.
Thank you. Are there, any other members out there that should be logged in in terms of this meeting, other than the 15 members of the city council? Hearing none, at 8 o'clock, I will ask our, the clerk of the committee of the whole, Paul Centafanti, if he will follow the roll, and 8 o'clock is almost here. Time is 8 o'clock on Monday evening, April 13th, 2020. Would our clerk, auditor Centafanti, please follow the roll? Committee of the Whole will come to order.
President Brasco.
Present.
Councilor Darcy.
Present.
Councilor Dunn.
Present.
Councilor Durkey.
Present.
Councilor Harris.
Present.
Council LaCava.
Present.
Council LaFosse.
Present.
Council LeBlanc.
Present.
Councilor Mackin.
Present.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Present.
Council O'Brien.
Present.
Council Paz.
Present.
Council Stanley.
Present.
Council Vidal.
Present.
Vice President McMenamin.
Present. All members of the city council are present, am I correct, auditor Centafanti?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Then would the, would clerk please call the first man?
The request of the mayor to approve the appropriation totaling $237,904 for the purchase of furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the Moody Street Fire Station project.
Councillor, the chair recognizes Councillor Harris, the ward councillor.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Vice President. I make a motion to hear from off-committee members, Chief McInnis and Deputy Pratt, please.
Along with the mayor, should she be needed?
If the mayor is needed, absolutely.
The council's made a motion to hear from off-committee members, all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Council Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'm just going to do a sound check through you to Chief McInnis. Are you on and off mute?
I'm here.
Okay. Madam Mayor, are you here as well? I'll start with Chief McInnis. Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight. Here's what I'd like you to do, is, you know, we, we've continued to work on the Moody Street Fire Station, and there's a couple of matters here before us. I think what's really important is that we take a moment and take a step back from the appropriation, and if you could take a minute and just explain, Chief, tonight, Madam Vice President through you to the chief, explain what FFNEs are. Madam Vice President, through you to the chief, explain what FFNEs are. And I know that you and your team have done a lot of work on the FFNEs. Can you just talk a little bit about how this is developed? And then the third layer of this is, you know, explain the history, how you came to these numbers, and then also if you could walk us through what each cost is here, Chief, and then I'll ask questions along the way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having us tonight. This process started pretty much the beginning of the whole process of the building. We've been reviewing these costs and getting bids. Deputy Pratt has been working on this constantly, along with our team of firefighters that are helping us with the designs. We've made a list, which you all should have, and I can go over parts of it right now if you'd like.
Please.
We'll start off with the gym equipment. We've, we sent out for three quotes. We used numerous firefighters in the, in the needs of the gym, and I think we've come up with a really good gym for the, for the men and women on Moody Street. We had three bids. We have the low bid from Rogue Fitness, and we're happy with, with the equipment that we're getting. Basically, it's treadmill elliptical, step, step mill, Echo Bike, various benches and weights, and that also includes shipping and delivery, which is, which is good. Next was the kitchen equipment. We had three bids on that also. We ended up picking Kittredge Food Service, which is, I'm sure some of the counselors will like that this is a female-owned business, and it's on the mass state bid list. And this is pretty much everything from forks and knives and spoons, which I'm sure you're not interested in quantities on all this stuff, but, you know, everything from mixing bowls to cutting boards, toasters, all the stuff in the kitchen, pretty much. The bigger equipment was in the bid for the contract, so we didn't have to worry about that at this point. That's already in the contract. Computers, we worked with the IT department. Basically, it's 11 new computers, spread throughout the office areas, the watch desk areas, all the offices, and that we worked with the IT department, and that's from Dell Computer. Monitors and televisions will be from Wally Corporation. They're also on the mass state build list, and they were recommended by the IT department also. That, the monitors are basically the, the screens that we'll have throughout the station that show you all the run lists, and if a run comes up, you can read it right on the screen if you're missing anything, and you can track the runs that everybody's out. And it's really a good, good addition. We have them in the other stations, but they're smaller scale, and this, we're really looking forward to this one. The furniture, WB Mason, they're also on the mass state bid list, and this, this, they use a very wide range of pretty much everything from tables and chairs, desk beds, you know, whiteboards, corkboards, any kind of storage unit, and that also includes delivery and installation. The, the alerting and security system, Alcom is the company that the, that the fire department uses now in the other stations for our alerting system. So we already know them, we work well with them, and they're also on the state bid list. That's going to include security cameras, entry systems, and the alerting systems. Washer and dryers, we, we got a price from Warren Dale Appliance for that local company. We're happy about that, but we've, like I said, Deputy Pratt has put months into this, getting these prices, and I appreciate everything that he's done on this, plus the guys that have gone through these plans on numerous occasions to make sure, we're trying not to forget anything, and I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be a few little things, but I'm open up for questions if anybody has any questions.
Is that your presentation, Chief McGuinness?
Yep. I have a few more questions. I have a few more questions.
I just want to make sure, is that, is that your entire presentation right now, Chief McGuinness?
Yeah, that was it on all the, the equipment and...
For the amount of, the funds total?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. And for the appropriation of $237,904, that was the explanation?
Yes.
All right. Counselor Harris, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Through you again to Chief McGuinness. Can you, can you also talk about the, who else you worked with in this project? We did get some expertise and some guidance. Can you just talk about that? Because I do know Deputy Pratt has worked with this with several of the firemen, you guys getting the prices, but we, the project was, the project team was guided by some expertise. Can you, can you talk to that so that, you know, these categories and things that were developed, you got some guidance there? Could you just talk about that and how you guys worked together?
Yeah, this was a collaboration between a number of people. Kyle Robinson from Sococchio Associations, Associates has been a big help with this. Deputy Pratt did, did the yeoman's work on this, along with the help of the firefighters committee, and, but like, like I said, we have reviewed this numerous times. The OPMs have given us a hand in this, and we think we've come up with a pretty good list for this.
Okay. And through you again, Madam Vice President, to Chief McGuinness. On the furniture, you know, the largest cost in this breakdown is the furniture, right? So within there, I know we can kind of almost imagine what it would be, but can you just talk about that, just further breakdown of that? You know, I know you guys talked about beds and some other things. Can you just talk about what it takes to furnish a fire station and, you know, all the detail that went into that $90,610 request?
When we first started going through this list, you know, every time we would go back and look at it, we would, they would come up with something else that we had missed. The, the, I'm sorry, WB Mason, they, they had a sales rep came out and met with us on a few occasions. We went through pretty much the whole station room by room, and then we actually, the committee, along with Deputy Pratt, went up to, I believe it was Lawrence, LeMonster, I'm sorry, LeMonster. They have a warehouse up in LeMonster that they, that we were able to go up there and look at a lot of this stuff. And basically, we're looking for, you know, sturdy, not, you know, this is, this is a house full of firefighters, and we're looking for sturdy furniture. You know, we're not looking for like a woodtop that's going to get gouged and scratched in a few weeks. We're looking at stuff that's going to last a long time. Yeah, we also visited three firehouses at the beginning of this project, and I believe all three of them had used WB Mason on their projects, and we were happy with what we saw with the furniture that they had picked out. So we're, we're pretty confident with, with what we've gone with.
Okay. So it's pretty much anything you can sit on, right, and use from a furniture perspective? That's chairs in the kitchen and tables all the way to your, your, your central room where everybody kind of relaxes, and then all the furniture for each of the bedrooms that are in the fire station? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, there's, there's many different kinds of chairs and different rooms, and those were all looked at, and, yeah, we, it was, it was pretty extensive, just looking in of all this stuff.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Vice President, again to Chief McGuinness. Gym equipment, I want to go to the gym equipment. Can, I know the total here, you went with the lowest bid of $27,324. Can you just talk about how important a gym is to the health of firemen working in the fire station and why, why it's essential, as essential as furniture or anything else listed here, please, Chief?
Yeah, the gym was one of the first things the guys wanted to look at for equipment, and we have some, a lot of the firefighters are really into the gyms, and the way the gym is set up in the new station, within, it's, it's on the second floor, it's, it's got an attached bathroom and shower to it. It's got a speaker system in it that'll, that'll shut off when the alert tone goes off. We've looked into this pretty, pretty good, and the guys are really excited about this. Everything that's going into the gym was, was, you know, researched by the men and women, and, you know, we, we've gone back and forth with it, and I think we've come up with a pretty good, pretty good gym for the workouts that these guys do.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, again to Chief McGuinness. Can you just go through alerting and security? So I'm down on that line item, $49,472. Can you talk about what's gone into the alerting and security system so people understand how that breaks down, whether that's cameras, monitors, tones, things that you guys make? Can you just talk to that, please, Chief?
Sure. Alcoms is, is a company that we've been dealing with for years. They, they do a lot of our, our other stations. We went back and forth on a lot of the entry systems. This has to be a secured building, so we, but we need to have our firefighters access it, you know, freely, and we've come up with a code system that we're going to be using that all came, Alcom has gone over with us, and they feel comfortable that everything should run smoothly. I mean, we could have went with like a FOB system, but I can't see passing out 160 FOBs, 170 FOBs, the firefighters, it's just not going to work. So we went with the basic code system. Security cameras are all around the building, all four corners of the building, pretty much for the security of the building itself and the parking lot. We have also security cameras at two of the main entrances to see who's coming and going. The, the alerting system, which we already have in all the other stations, will be the same, so, and it can be upgraded in the future. We've made sure of that. It's, it's a pretty good system, and we're happy with it.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Again, Madam Vice President, again, back to Chief McGuinness. Chief, could, could you or Deputy Pratt just break down the difference between the categories, the subcategories of what's under computers versus what's monitors and televisions? Are the monitors, the monitors for the computers? I just want to make sure there's no confusion there. Could, could you break that down for us just at a high level, please?
All right. The, the monitors are not for the computers. The monitor, a monitor that we use, it will be hung on the walls, like there'd be one in the gym, there'd be one in the, in the kitchen area, there'd be one on the, on the apparatus floor, and a few other strategic locations around the building, and those are the, those are the run screens, where the runs are, and it gives you a description of where, where the trucks are going, and, you know, notes from dispatch that you can read right on the monitor. That's what I mean by monitors. I'm sorry if there was any computers in there. As far as the TVs, the TVs in the main areas we have on here, on, on the common areas is in the loafing room, the kitchen, the watch desk area, but this is not TVs for the guys' rooms. Those are, they're pretty much on their own for that. So this is, the TVs are just for the, for the common areas that, that we're covering.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Deputy Pratt. This concludes my questions to you. Through you, Madam Vice President, to Mayor McCarthy. Is the mayor on? Would she like to comment on this as well?
I'm on.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much. Would you like to make any comments? I know this, this has been a lot of hard work coming up with the FFNEs, and if you want to make a comment on this, I, I wanted to ask you. Madam Mayor, you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Good evening. Hi, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, yeah. Good. I'd like to thank the committees, yourself, as well as Deputy Pratt, John Millian, and a whole bunch of, the chief of fire as well, and for all the work that they've been doing, as you can start to see that it's coming to fruition. This was not in the original bid, and the purchase decision did not wish to put it in the original bid, so that these are items that were afterwards, but now it were coming to see the building moving along. The chief asked to have it put in now, and I do support it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank your work and support as well on this. This has been very much from the very beginning a team effort, and I want to thank you as well, as well as all the folks who have put elbow grease into, into developing this list. It's very detailed. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Vice, thank you. Madam Vice President, I'd like, I know other counselors may want to speak on this, but I, and they can ask additional questions, but I, I think it's important that the project continues to move forward. It's an essential, critical project for all the city of Waltham, including the South Side. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve, and then I will yield the floor and allow any other counselors for comments or questions. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris makes a motion for approval on matter number two on our, referred to us from our major docket. Are there any other councils who wish to make comments or ask questions? Hearing and seeing none, I would like to have a roll call on the motion for approval, and the roll should be called by the clerk.
Mr. Clerk?
President Brasco.
Yes.
Counselor Darcy.
Yes.
Counselor Dunn.
Yes.
Counselor Durkey.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaCava.
Yes.
Counselor LaFosse.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Yes.
Counselor Mackin.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Paz.
Yes.
Counselor Stanley.
Yes.
Counselor Vidal.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor.
I wish to vote, Mr. Clerk, the chair votes.
Fifteen in favor, none opposed.
By your action, you have approved the appropriation totaling $237,904 for the purchase of furniture, fixtures and equipment for the Moody Street Fire Station project. The clerk will read the next matter.
A request from the mayor to approve the appointment of Catherine D. Lofman as the Assistant City Solicitor.
Is there a, a motion to send this to committee?
Madam, Madam Vice President.
President Brasco.
In accordance with Rule 42 of the Waltham City Council, on the City Council Charter 3.3, we do not have the right to act upon this matter within six days of the, the appointment being presented to the city council, so I make a motion to table this matter until next Monday evening.
And the motion to table is not debatable. However, Counselor Brasco, I do believe you wish to invite the mayor, the candidate, and anybody else necessary into the committee meeting of the whole next week. Am I correct?
That is correct, Madam Vice President.
You understand the sense of the motion? The motion is to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. The clerk will read the next matter.
A request of the mayor, request of the mayor for approval to go forward with the purchase and sale agreement regarding the property at 89-91. purchase and sale agreement regarding the property at eighty-nine dash ninety-one Maple Street, in accordance with the terms set forth in her communication to the City Council.
Dated April ninth, twenty-twenty. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to hear from offcommittee members, Madam Mayor McCarthy, Chief McGinnis, and Deputy Pratt, please.
You all understand the sense of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Harris, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Through you to Chief McGinnis. Are you there, Chief?
I am here again.
Okay. Thank you for joining us on this matter. Again, I will speak with the mayor in just a minute, but I was hoping that you could just kind of give a background of, you know, from your perspective, what eighty-nine ninety-one Maple Street represents to the Moody Street Fire Station, and really why this is being pursued from your perspective as Chief, please.
This has been pretty much on the table in my mind since day one of starting the design process of this building. Once we incorporated the new building and the old building together, we realized right away that there was not enough parking. The question came up whether it could be a possibility to acquire the property in the right to the, in the back of the station to accommodate the parking. Counselor Harris and the mayor have been on board on this, and the mayor has worked diligently with the owner of that property, maybe with a little push from Counselor Harris and I, but she has been on board since day one. And this is finishing off the project. This is what we've been looking for. The design as it is today is probably eight, maybe nine parking spots for a station that holds more than that. It's just, it's just not enough room, and we knew that from the beginning. Right now, we're using a lot of on-street parking. We're also using parking from the school, the South Junior across the street. Nick Abruzzi has been good enough to let us park over there for the last few years, and it's becoming a problem for him because that building is getting much busier with the programs they're running. So we're basically in the way over there, and I don't want to be in their way. So this is, this is going to open that up to, we're looking at, I don't have a, I don't have a complete design of the parking lot that will be available, but we're looking at probably thirty to thirty-two spots when it's done. And that would give us room for all the cars that are working there. And as you know, a lot of the firefighters have pickup trucks, so a lot of this parking, it can't be for compact cars. So we're looking to put plenty of spaces in there. We'll also have room if we need a room for a trailer or something, one of our rescue trailers or decon trailers. We'd have plenty of room out there. So this is, this is like one of the final steps that we've been looking for since day one. I know the firefighters have been concerned about this since we started the project, as is a lot of the public. I get questions on it all the time. Where are you going to park the cars? And with the hard work of Counselor Harris and Mayor McCarthy, I think we've come up with a solution here, and I really hope this will pass through. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I do appreciate your testimony here tonight. Was there anything else you wanted to say about parking in general? Because I do believe, through you, Madam Vice President, back to Chief McGinnis. Chief, in this project, we had to get certain variances. Can you talk about what we had to do to basically make this project congruent? We did have to get a variance in permission to have less parking on-site based on the square footage of the new building. Can you just talk to that? And with this, with this new appropriation potentially, and the development of the new sites, would that variance then get removed, and we could be a compliant project? Could you just talk to that for us, please?
Yeah, we're going to have a lot of work to do if this property is acquired. We're going to have to merge the lots, and we'll probably, I'm sure we'll be able to get rid of the parking restrictions, because that was one of the things we went to zoning for, was the reduced parking, and that will not be in effect anymore. We'll work with the law department to get the wording and everything straightened out for the zoning. But we got a lot of work to do to, on the design and the zoning, and there's plenty of work left to do.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Vice President, through you, to Madam Mayor McCarthy, we have a few questions for the mayor tonight. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
As I read your, did you want to make an overall statement just about this project in general and this property? Because you've done a lot of work on this. I defer the work to you and the chief here. So can you just speak to it? Then I have a couple of questions, please.
So I'd just like to say the Chief of Fire and the Ward Eight Council asked me to explore purchasing the property behind the new Moody Street Fire Station for parking for the new station. This idea had come up as part of the original Maguire Group study, which is several years ago, and they had recommended as part of the project that this lot be acquired. The chief and I met with one of the owners of eighty-nine ninety-one Maple Street to discuss the purchase of the property. We also undertook an appraisal, which came in at six-hundred-ninety thousand dollars. There were many demands by the owners in negotiations. The owners have agreed to sell their property to the city of Waltham for the charter value of seven-twenty-three-two-ninety-one-sixty-six. They would like a quick closing. They need six months to a year to move. I indicated I could recommend no rent if we agreed to the period, and they would have to pay their own utilities, water, and taxes. The chief recommends a six-month tenancy, occupancy agreement, excuse me, and I support that. And then I'm seeking approval to go forward with a purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in this communication from your office to us, really what you're doing is laying out the terms and conditions, and the price, and then asking permission of this body to basically approve it so you can move forward with a purchase of sale. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to thank you for all your work on this. This is very strong work and very diligent in the middle of everything else that's going on in the city. So, thank you very much. I know there may be other questions from councilors, but at this time, Madam Vice President, I make a motion to approve the request from the mayor to go forward with the purchase and sales agreements with the terms and conditions the mayor just outlined in her testimony. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor Harris, Counselor from Ward Eight. You all understand the sense of the motion. Are the speakers on the motion?
Yep. Counselor LaCava?
Counselor LaCava, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Dean. Few questions. I believe this may go to the chief, Chief McGinnis, how are you, or the mayor. So that seven-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand is to purchase the house. Do we have estimated costs to tear down the house, plans to, the plans drawn up for the lot to finish paving the lot? Do we have a final number on the cost that we?
I would like to address that. I would like to address that. We would have to do it with every building that we take down, an environmental analysis, and we put it out to demo. And then I would ask that the city's planning assistant planner, who has done a lot of work over there, actually design the parking lot for, so we'll do that in-house, Counselor.
Okay. So?
But the other part, I, naturally, the, you know, the environmental removal for us prior to demo would have to go out a bit.
Okay. And should we have it, just an estimated, are we looking at another, I mean, just for easy numbers, say, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to close to a million said and done on this project?
Uh, probably. I can't guess, but I imagine it will be around there.
Okay.
That's why I'm doing it, that's why I'm doing it in-house, because I've had, Jimmy Lacava has the ability to do it, and he's done other parking lots as well, for the council and for the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, that was it.
Your answer, your question's answered, Counselor. Are there any other councilors who wish to weigh in on this matter at this time? We have a motion on the floor. Approval for the mayor to go forward with the purchase and sales agreement, and it requires a roll call? So the clerk will call the roll.
President Brasco?
Yes.
Counselor Darcy?
Yes.
Counselor Dunn?
Yes.
Counselor Jerky?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaCava?
Yes.
Counselor Fossey?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank?
Yes.
Counselor Mackin?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Paz?
Yes.
Counselor Stanley?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Clerk will call the chair?
Vice President McMiniman?
Yes.
Fifteen in favor, none opposed.
By your action, you have authorized a vote to allow the mayor to go forward with the purchase and sales agreement regarding the property at eighty-nine ninety-one Maple Street. The clerk will call the next matter.
The mayor respectfully requests approval to go forward with an agreement to purchase the UMass Land and Building south of Beaver Street, in accordance with the terms set forth in the communications to the City Council dated April ninth, twenty-twenty. Madam Vice President, Counselor McLaughlin, I'd like to move to hear from the mayor.
Counselor McLaughlin makes a motion to hear from the mayor. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Mayor, Counselor McLaughlin, you have the floor.
Madam Mayor, do you want to go over, just give an outline of what this agreement was?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Because I read my letter, because we're doing it remotely, you know, the councilors have it, but the public doesn't. So your councils, the city negotiating team, and the UMass negotiating team have reached an agreement subject to approval of the City Council, governor, and state legislature to purchase the UMass land and building south of Beaver Street. Terms: Sales price, seventeen million four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for the southern parcel. There was a deduction in price for environmental issues. The city has to do a title search. The law department is drafting a permanent conservation restriction for farming, open space, and recreation for the entire twenty-five-acre parcel. With the City Council's permission, I will ask the State Department of Conservation and Recreation to hold that restriction. UMass will retain the land north of Beaver Street and will deposit two million dollars of the sale proceeds in escrow to address the environmental issues north of Beaver Street. UMass will use some of the sales proceeds to establish a permanent endowment for scholarships for Waltham students attending UMass Amherst. Tenants will remain on the site. Pursuant to Chapter thirty-B, the city will have to issue requests for proposals for leases for the tenant or tenants subject to the City Council approval. The city's financing plan is attached under separate cover. I would like to thank Lieutenant Governor Karen Palito and Governor Charles Baker and their staff for their guidance and assistance, State Senator Michael Barrett for his vision, Representative John Lawn for his State House acumen, acumen, excuse me, and Representative Thomas Stanley for his advocacy on the local and state level. They now will shepherd this through the legislative process if approved by the City Council. Last but not least, I would like to thank Assistant City Solicitor Luke Stanton, Ward Four Counselor John McLaughlin, who was, as you remember, I asked for a counselor to be a member of the negotiating team, Atthe Campbell from CDW Environmental, and attorneys Jerry Leone and Chris Dunn, representing UMass and its trustees, as well as the UMass officials and boards, still has to vote, but they're going to vote shortly, who have worked with us through this confidential process, numerous meetings, and their agreement as set forth above. I respectfully request approval to go forward with the terms as set forth above. Thank you, Counselor from Ward Four, for all your work.
Well, Mayor, thank you. Having the opportunity to sit in, I want to point out that Counselor, I'm sorry, Attorney Stanton is also in on this call, on this meeting today, and he's available to answer questions. But I wanted to just highlight the fact that, Mayor McCarthy, you led this negotiation. It was not easy at times, but I feel it was very successful. I think we got a great deal out of this, and I'm sure there may be other questions, but I want to move approval to give the mayor the authority to move ahead with this agreement.
Madam Vice President?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Counselor LeBlank?
I'll let the record reflect that I will not be voting on this matter.
You understand the record reflects that Counselor LeBlank has recused himself on appearance of a possibility of a conflict of interest. There has been a motion made on the matter by Counselor McLaughlin, and I see questions are on this motion. So, the motion on the floor is for approval. And Counselor Darcy?
Thank you. We started this journey on December the twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, on a resolution submitted by myself, Counselor McLaughlin, and Counselor Nabulime to protect the UMass farm on Beaver Street. The former land of Cornelia Warren's family, the site where the Waltham butternut squash and the Waltham broccoli were invented, the site of important nonprofits such as the Boston Area Gleaners, mass farmers' markets, Grow Native, Community Gardens, Waltham Fields Community Farms. As a side note, in two thousand nineteen alone, Waltham Fields Community Farms donated thirty-two thousand pounds of vegetables and fruits to various food shelters in the greater Boston area. I'd like to thank Dee Cricker, Marie Daly, the late David Case, Mark Rudnick, all the tenants of the Waltham Field Station, but most importantly, Cornelia Warren, without whose foresight and philanthropy, we would not even be in a situation where we have a functioning farm and nonprofits, and B, we have the opportunity now to protect that farm in perpetuity. If there ever should be a future monument on Waltham Common, it should be erected in honor of the memory of Cornelia Warren, the most important benefactor in the history of the city of Waltham. I urge my peers to vote in favor of this for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Darcy. Counselor Paz, I recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Dean. I just would like to commend everyone who displayed foresighting leadership into this matter. Last weekend, we delivered food to people in a time of crisis. The week before, we ran out of food. So I think the purchase of this farm is a real, I think, solution to food scarcity that not only impacts Waltham but folks across the state. So I urge folks to support this matter and really commend everyone who's been involved. This is something that future generations will thank us for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paz. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on the matter? If not, there is a motion made by Counselor McLaughlin for approval of the matter number five. And would, could I ask the clerk if the clerk would read the motion for approval, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
That the City Council authorizes the mayor to go forward with an agreement to purchase the UMass Land and Building south of Beaver Street, in accordance with the terms set forth in the mayor's communications to the City Council dated April ninth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you very much. You all understand the sense of the motion. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
President Brasco?
Yes.
Counselor Darcy?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Dunn?
Yes.
Counselor Jerky?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaCava?
Yes.
Counselor Fossey?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank is recused. Counselor Mackin?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Paz?
Yes.
Counselor Stanley?
Yes.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Clerk will call, Council President. Clerk will call the council president.
Vice President.
I'm sorry, Vice President.
Vice President McMenamin.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, one recused.
By your action, you have moved approval of the request of the mayor to go forward with an agreement to purchase the UMass Land and Buildings on Beaver Street. The clerk will read the next matter, please.
Mayor respectfully requests approval of a financing transaction totaling three million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards the seventeen million four hundred and twenty thousand dollar acquisition cost of the UMass Field Station and Farm Property. These funds will supplement the previous appropriation of CPA funds of thirteen million seven hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Madam Vice President, Counselor McLaughlin here. I'd like to make a mo-
McLaughlin, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to hear from the mayor and/or Assistant City Solicitor Luke Stanton regarding this.
Counselor McLaughlin makes a motion to hear from off-committee members regarding this matter. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Close the ayes, have it. Counselor McLaughlin, you have the floor.
Mayor, you've already spoken to the matter, but is there anything else you'd like to add with regard to the financing?
Well, one of the drones in the process here, he doesn't like to say too much, but he is listening. He did perform a lot of work back and forth, and so I give him credit then and now as well. So, and then I had originally gone to the CPA, and the CPA did agree to fourteen million dollars in two different council orders. But I do have the ability, by this transaction, not to go out to bond by using the CPA money and the sale of city-owned land. Some of it was from Bank School and six hundred and two thousand from the unreserved fund balance. That will come to the three million four twenty that's needed to complete the transaction. So there was no interest here. And um, I'm pleased that this farm, which a lot of people know the valuable soil that it produced. A lot of people know the history of it. But it is a site that is actually an active farm, the last farm in the city of Waldham that is being operated by various tenants. And I think, you know, it's an opportunity to keep it producing, not only um for farm produce, but also to have it be a sustainable farm that will basically help the environment as well as feed the world, meaning the world around us. And I think it's important that we give credit to the people who are actually doing the farming, and there's nothing like working a farm, so. I just would like to thank the city auditor for his um setting forth this financial transaction. And I want to thank him for that because he likes to make sure I don't bond things. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we purchased the feral, I made the comment that the most important fact was that we, we, the city, now control what happens with this property, and the same is true here with the field station. And the fact that we're able to retain the farm is more important now than ever. I think we all would agree on that. Um, I would like, Madam Vice President, I'd like to move approval on this. If there are no other que- well, and there may be other que-
Oh, no, you can make the motion for approval, but I'm going to hear if there are other counselors who wish to weigh in on this. Counselor McLaughlin makes a motion for approval on the request of the mayor of the financing transaction. And there are a number of circumstances here. You all understand, I have in front of you all of those circumstances. I'll have the clerk read it when we finally have a vote here. So is there anybody else who wishes to be weigh in on this matter? Do I see Counselor Darcy's hand up?
Uh, no, sorry.
No. Any other counselors who wish to be heard on the matter? If not, I will ask the clerk to read the motion and ask for a roll call, please.
That the city council approves the following financing transaction totaling three million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards the seventeen million four hundred and twenty thousand dollar acquisition cost of the UMass Field Station and Farm Property. These funds will supplement the previous appropriation of CPA funds of thirteen million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars approved on November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, under Council Order thirty-four six fourteen, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars approved on twelve ten, two thousand and nineteen, under Council Order three, three four six five six. Uh, so we're taking six hundred and two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents from unreserved fund balance and two million eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total of three million four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the acquisition of the UMass Fields.
You all understand the sense of the motion. The clerk will call the roll.
President Brasco.
Yes.
Counselor Darcy.
Yes.
Counselor Dunn.
Yes.
Counselor Jerky.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaCava.
Yes.
Counselor Fossey.
Yes.
Counselor Blank is recused. Counselor Mackin.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Paz.
Yes.
Counselor Stanley.
Yes.
Counselor Vidal.
Yes.
Vice President McMenamin.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, one recused.
By your action, you have approved the financial transaction of which the clerk previously spoke to you. Uh, the clerk will read the next matter, please.
Uh, the mayor respectfully requests approval of a funding allotment totaling one hundred and three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars for cable access funds to be paid to the Waldham Community Access Corporation for studio equipment, field equipment, and the last phase of the studio lighting equipment.
We should the committee.
Motion to table until next week.
Motion to table. The motion is not debatable, and I presume we can ask the clerk if the clerk will contact a representative from Waldham Community Access Cable to be present. I'm sorry, to be present to discuss the matter. All those in favor. The motion to table is not debatable. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Close the ayes, have it. Um, the clerk, I think, I think the clerk has a late filed communication.
Yes.
Was referred to us from the first meeting.
Counsel, Madam Vice President.
Counsel Brasco. Counsel President Brasco.
Uh, Madam Vice President, uh, the late filed communication from the Community Preservation Committee I had referred well in the city council first meeting this evening to the Long Term Debt Committee in error. So it is currently before the Long Term Debt Committee for that one million dollars. If the Long Term Debt Committee, Counselor Darcy is chairperson, wants to convene that committee at the reset, at the adjournment of the committee of the whole. That's if I believe that was the next matter that you were going to discuss.
Um, it is. What we could do is I could table the committee of the whole, uh, and Counselor Darcy could convene that committee, Long Term Debt Committee, in order to take that matter and transfer it out to the committee of the whole. Is that possible, Counsel President Brasco?
Um, it would actually have to, Madam Vice President.
Council?
It would have to go through the full council, so if he wants to-
What do you recommend, Counsel Brasco?
Madam Vice President, I would say that we, if there's no new matters before the committee of the whole, that we, at this ti- at this time, I would make a motion to adjourn, and that the Counselor Darcy is chairperson of the Long Term Debt Committee convene a brief meeting of the Long Term Debt and Capital Planning Committee for the one million dollar CPA late filed communication.
Most certainly. Are there any other matters that we have not taken up? And there are no, the old matters we can discuss if you wish to do that next week at the full committee of the whole meeting at a regular committee night. So Counsel Brasco has made a motion to adjourn. All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Close the ayes, have it. Thank you very much for your cooperation, all counselors and all participants. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this time, Counselor Darcy, um, with the Assistant City Clerk will convene a meeting of the Long Term Debt Committee. Mister Assistant City Clerk.
Okay, I need Counselor Darcy to call it to order before I can take attendance.
I call the Long Term Debt Committee meeting to order on April thirteenth.
Okay, Counselor Dar- uh, Jerky.
Present.
Counselor McMenamin.
Present.
Counselor Paz.
Present.
Counselor Stanley.
Present.
Chairman Darcy.
Present.
Chairman Darcy, you have five members present, so you have a quorum.
Could the clerk please read the new matter that was forwarded to our committee this evening?
Yep, just give me one second. It is a communication from the CPC commission, committee, um, regarding a, here, I got it. It's a communication from the CPC committee requesting the approval of the mayor's request for a million dollars in CPA emergency housing assistance funds to be added to tonight's docket. It's going to be done in, uh, I'm sorry, uh, it's going to have to be done in two orders, Counselor, because first you have to transfer the money, and then you have to approve it. The auditor can explain it if need be.
Okay, could you please read the first matter then? Because I know there's two separate matters. One is a transfer, so.
Yeah, we only have it docketed as one item, but it's going to be two orders that it generates. But the first would be, let me read the first draft order.
Thank you.
So the first draft order is that, is this the first one? The city council approves a request to the Community Preservation Committee to transfer two hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents from undesignated CPA fund to the CPA Housing Fund.
My hand is raised, Counselor.
Thank you. On the matter, um.
My hand is raised, Counselor. This is Counselor McMenamin.
Um, Counselor McMenamin, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Darcy. Good evening. So I have the communication, or one of the communications in front of me, and I think I have some questions here since this came in to us this evening. Um, is the Chair of the CPC available, Mr. Barrett?
Counselor McMenamin makes a motion here from all off-committee members. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close the ayes, have it. Thank you. Go ahead.
Counsel Barrett, are you available? I mean, I'm sorry. Uh, President, Chair Barrett, are you available?
I am.
Uh, so I have a couple of questions. First of all, could you explain to us the general idea of this request by the mayor to the CPC in terms of emergency housing assistance funds? That's the first thing. And the second thing, I'd like you to explain, if we approve this amount of money, aside from the good works that it will provide in housing assistance, if we approve the money, what, um, what impact does that have on the housing portion of the three required portions of the CPC? So, uh, through you, Counselor Darcy, to Chairman Barrett, could you explain those things to me, please?
Absolutely. The, it is, it's definitely within our parameters and purview to, to act on this, and it will act as both um, a rental assistance and possibly, depending upon how the mortgages are set up, mortgage assistance for those that are out of work. Now, this money will be transferred from, from the CP, CPC funds into the Housing Division and, uh, Bob Waters and Deb Flanagan and Colette and their crew will, is, there is, if, I don't know you saw the mayor's original application for, uh, for the assistance for food, for the original one hundred and fifty thousand, but it will be a similar, uh, application, and there will be, in order, the money will be directly paid to landlords, uh, and they will have to fill out a W nine, and the, uh, the Housing Division will track, will track it and, uh, set up the applications and, um, uh, and on our call, we had a special meeting Friday afternoon. And on the call, there were several nonprofits that said they would assist in, in filling out the, the applications. Is that clear? Did I, did I miss anything?
No, you, the explanation is a very good one for me. I have a request, though. Um, since, and you can just imagine, because it's the way I operate, um, I have all of the CPC applications that have been presented to the city councils from its inception, however many years ago, twelve years ago. I do not have the actual CPC application for this, so if you could provide that to the clerk after this meeting, I'm sure this is going to be approved, but if you could provide that to the clerk, so the clerk can provide the city council with that app-
I, I believe it was, was, uh, Joe, Assistant City Clerk, Bazzard, did that, that did go with the, uh?
I believe we emailed it out to Saff this morning.
The app-
I thought you did. It's, it's an attachment to the, it was an attachment to the, to the, uh,
You know something? Okay, I see it in my file. I downloaded it. Okay, I, I think, no, I'm sorry, I don't. I only have the order for the million dollars. I don't have the actual um, application. Anyway, either way, if we don't have it, what I'm asking you now publicly the transparency is that if we have it and I can find it, that's fine. If not, and we ask the clerk to ask you to provide a file, she'll be able to do that, will you?
Absolutely, we'll have that. She, you'll have it, Counselor.
Very good. Thank you. So now let's go back to the next question, if I may. So, um, I have a couple of questions related to this now. Through the Chair Darcy to you, Chair Barrett. With this housing assistance, is this going to ease the difficulty, the anxiety of people who live in Waldham who may be eligible for the application to talk to our Housing Department? Is this going to give them a little bit of a respite based on what's happening with this COVID pandemic?
That was what the mayor had hoped for. Uh, there, and this is what, which, how she presented it. I actually, Counselor, the mayor may be on the call. She-
I'll ask her in a minute. Well, just excuse you, Mr. Barrett, I'm not done with you. I'll get her to her in a minute. I'm not finished. I will get to her. Okay, so now-
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so now you have, you have given me that, that explanation. That's good, I think. And next question, will this be for providing for Waldham residents and Waldham residents and more Waldham residents and nobody around us but Waldham residents?
Waldham residents only.
Thank you. The next question I have, how does this impact, in what positive way does this impact the, um, the, the portion of required money that we receive that must be applied towards either historical value or historical use, open space, or housing? How does this impact the housing portion?
Well, we had to add money to the housing portion from the undesigned funds, so that brings that down to, that, this one million dollars will bring the housing portion down to zero until we, I believe we have another state match coming in, so.
But my question is really, I guess, is in a different direction. The question being, we have been chastised for the lack of CPC percentage money, money percentages that we have been able to apply towards housing versus the other two categories. Does this give us a better bang for the buck, if you will, in that category of housing?
Well, it certainly would dig, make a pretty good jump on it. I would, I can't answer that honestly in as much. I, I don't have the figures in front of me. that honestly in as much. I don't have the figures in front of me, and I wouldn't have them until I spoke to Julie tomorrow, to be quite honest with you, counselor. Again, I would think it doesn't, I mean, you're looking at a million dollars, so.
I would think so, too. I would think so, too. So that being said, thank you for being with us, Chair Barrett. Thank the committee for this. I think this is a wonderful collaboration from everybody in the city, from the mayor all the way down in the various boards, the city council. I think this is going to be a magnificent help to our people. I'm gonna make a motion for approval, and then when I make that motion for approval, I would like to move to hear from Mayor McCarthy.
So Counsel McMiniman has made a motion for approval of the first order. On the motion, Counsel McMiniman?
Yes, could we hear from Mayor McCarthy and have her evaluation of this situation?
Good evening again. So we filed an application, the city of Waldham, with the Housing Division, and for the Emergency Assistance Housing Fund, and basically on page one, it was for support. And it's to provide financial assistance for displaced persons or those at risk of becoming displaced, for Waldham residents, and it would go to the landlord. We requested one million dollars, and this would basically affect, it could affect single families, condominiums, individual family, or group rentals. The targeted population would be individuals, families, special needs, identified needs, elderly, homeless, at risk of homelessness, and then we added also veterans. On page three of the application, that's not applicable. Page four is not applicable. And then this was done with a couple of attachments. I'm just getting there. So with regard to the Emergency Assistance Program, which the city council did agree to for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Housing Division drafted up a simple, trying to be simple, application, because sometimes the application could be more difficult than applying. So it was a simple application, and that one had various things. This would be for rent payment or mortgage payment only, because it's CPC money. And then there's verification requirements, return the application, and description, the number of people in the household, stuff like that. Now, part of the application included W-9, which is a request for taxpayer number, which is required as part of the application, because this would be income to whomever is receiving it. So that's the reason we have to do this, and each individual applicant has to have a separate vendor identification. We've also attached the MHB Emergency Rental Assistance Program guidelines that goes into the COVID emergency. We're in it together. The purpose, the parameters, the application, the income eligibility, the documents that you would have to do, the selection process, accommodations for some residents, and the program management. This is a temporary assistance program, and for like ninety days maximum, and then also there's some things that you should be careful about, and you have to comply with the Massachusetts law, anti-aid amendment, as well as payments are made directly to landlords, and that you should partner with somebody to do this, which is the city's Housing Division. And the city's Housing Division has done for many years an emergency assistance program. So we have an application checklist, which, trying to make that clear, we're also gonna provide as part of the testimony on Friday, that we will provide to the Housing Division, a checklist. So the individual social agency groups that are basically receiving a lot of requests and demand, that we'll try to simplify the process as well, to say, okay, you have to have these things, you have to have this information, and then in multi languages. So then we have as part of the application, the next steps, what will happen. So you've completed the application and got all the required income documentation ready. You contact the Housing Division for schedule an intake appointment, and that would be done by thirty minutes. And then, after that, we have the attachments of the income limits. So I did agree at the discussion by the CPC and other of the groups, in this application, the Housing Division recommended it be for hundred percent and below, which means you can aid people that might have a family, and this old person is out of work and needs to either pay rent or mortgage, so, but I did agree to have two hundred thousand of this million identified for people of fifty percent of the area median income and below. And most of the original application for the one hundred and fifty COVID emergency fund has gone over seventy percent to people in that category. So basically, that is the application. There were other things that were discussed during that. I believe you received some information. I do have the balances in the accounts, thanks to the city auditor. And in the housing account, there was seven hundred and forty-eight, eight ninety, and then the undesignated. That's the reason why there's a transfer. There's actually not the undesignated. So basically, what we're trying to do is prevent people from losing their apartment or losing their home due to this pandemic, global pandemic. And this money has been allocated for this type of, you know, housing. Our long-term goal is to build the housing, but we feel that this is a good use of the money, particularly in light of the enormous need that we're seeing, and we're trying to keep people, you know, safe in their homes until they can get back to work.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, for your leadership on this. And Chair Barrett, the same with you.
Can I say one more thing? I would like to thank the Housing Division, and I'd also like to thank CPC, and I'd also like to thank all the advocates that, you know, Watch, and there's various advocates, both on the CPC, as well as in the community, you know, they're all trying to do their part to make sure that we don't have people getting sick, and emotional sickness, and physical sickness.
If I may before, if I may before, I would like to thank the mayor. She did a lot of work on this, and the Housing Division, Bob, and Debbie, and Colette, and actually the committee for coming together so quickly. It went very, very quickly, and with, I think it came out very well. So I commend everybody.
Thank you, Chair Barrett. It's wonderful what the spirit of cooperation can accomplish. Now, I have both of these. Mr. Chair Darcy, I see you've got someone else who wishes to speak, but in order to do that, I found the communication that came to us from the auditor today, and it was in my files, and so there are two action items required, and I think they have to be done in the following order. So I'm going to make a motion on the first matter, and then I'll be glad to do it on the second, but we'll probably have to vote them independently. So the first action we are being asked to provide is, one, to approve the transfer of two hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents from the undesignated CPA fund to the Housing CPA Fund. That's my motion.
Thank you. And on that motion, we have Counselor from Ward Nine, Counselor Paz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to the mayor, just a question about the application. The W-9 is necessary. It'll only be for landlords and mortgage companies to fill out. Is that correct?
That's correct, unless the people, you know, subsidizing the rent themselves. In other words, if they can prove, more than likely, it will be that. But if they can prove that they've made payment, you see what I mean? So, but ninety-nine percent of it will be for that.
Yeah, and thank you so much for your leadership on this matter. It's important.
Thanks, everybody for their help.
Just one last thing. Has the city considered maybe doing a targeted mailing, because it's so hard for folks to kind of find out where the resources are, particularly working with Watch, because they have a mailing group, I think, that would benefit from seeing this.
Well, right now, right now, I have, respectfully, right now, I have the Housing Division, the four of them are working nonstop to clear up the hundred and fifty. Once, if and when this money becomes available, what we did agree at the meeting is to have the social service groups, each one of them are referring people. So those various groups all communicate. You know, they have a monthly interagency agreement, I mean, agreement meeting, excuse me, they have interagency meetings once a month usually, and this will be shared that way. At this point, counsel, until I get the backlog finished, because we're trying to, with that simple application, to try to get the money. It has to be in arrears, first of all, and then all of the paperwork in, so that they can get some relief. And so I can't, I can't really promise that. And there's plenty of applications. I mean, we're talking about a lot of applications. So I just want them to get caught up before I give them any more work to do.
I understand.
Because it's tons of work, you know what I mean, to basically get all of the documents, you know, the landlord and everything. But they agreed that they will help with that process, and, you know, to help with us to get that backlog done. Because the first checks are going on the warrant this week, and then there's another batch right after that, so we can see what happens. So the first batch is sixty-seven thousand of the one hundred and fifty. Okay, so.
If I may, the applications are gonna also be online at some point in time, too. And partnership of youth is involved in it as well.
That's correct. Partnership for youth, there's various, you know, Waldham Family Schools, there's a whole bunch of groups involved that have all, you know, sent stuff to the Waldham Housing Division of the Planning Department. And they are working day and night to process those applications. And we also have a new employee who is multilingual in that department. So, I mean, you know, when other people, they're taking it by phone, they're taking it by email, they're trying to, trying to get through it. So just, if we can finish the hundred and fifty, and then I think there's plenty of, what I'm trying to say is, there's plenty of outreach by the social service agencies within the city that are, you know, accelerating this program for the benefit of the constituents.
Counsel Paz, are you finished?
Yep, thank you.
Great. So I just want to point out that if you have questions about this program, you can contact the Housing Department Emergency Assistant Line at seven eight one three one four three three eight six. And the deadline is April thirtieth, twenty twenty, for consideration. So the first motion is.
Okay, okay. Counsel, could I just say something? That is for the hundred and fifty. The deadline for this program, we have not set up yet. Okay, so I just have to make sure they know. Yeah, okay.
Is it the same phone number for both, then?
Yes, I mean, that's Colette Casey-Brenner's phone number, and Debbie Flanagan was on the line, as well as Colette, as well as Mr. Waters, you know, listening to all of the testimony at the CPC hearing.
Great. All right. Thank you, Mayor. So.
Thank you, Counsel Chair.
Counselor McMiniman.
Counsel Chair, thank you. Counselor Chair Darcy, you have another counselor with his hand up who wishes to speak.
Okay, that just came in. I didn't see it. It's Counselor from Ward Six, Counselor Durkey. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to the mayor. Mayor, you said this is a need-based program for people who have mortgages. Has the program parameters, or have the program parameters changed specifically for this funding, or has it always been the same?
So the program parameters that the Waldham Housing Division is pretty much the same. So the same process that they have to go through. The only difference here is, because of the pandemic, some of the banks are entertaining, you know, a ninety-day extension of the mortgages. If they go in, if you contact your, you know what I mean, your bank, they're doing that, and then they're adding the fees at the end. But this is designed to either home rental assistance or mortgage assistance for up to ninety days to get beyond the pandemic till you can come back, hopefully, to work. So this is what this one's designed. So we have in the Housing Division a first and last month's rent and other, you know, emergency assistance programs. But this is similarly designed, and the CPC wanted to make sure that it was the Housing Division running this, so that, you know, so that those same things are being done. So I can say that.
Understood.
Okay. I hope I answered your question.
Well, yes. If I may clarify, on that, not all mortgages are going to be covered. So that's gotta be, that's gotta be run. We've gotta check on those, because some, if it includes real estate taxes, it's ineligible.
That's right. This is only for rent.
So just to let you know on that.
Only for rent.
No, I guess.
Yeah.
Mayor, I guess my, I'm sorry, to both, my concern is that just by virtue of the fact that you lost your job does not necessarily mean you're eligible for the program. It still has to be needs-based. I mean, if you have a million dollars.
Oh, that's correct. That is absolutely correct. So that's the MHP guidelines that I was mentioning, and the income guidelines. So because you don't have the application, and I apologize, that all of those checks and balances are attached to the application.
That's all I was concerned with.
You, this is only meant, you know, if you have money in the bank and you're not using your money, you're not eligible for it. It's eligible for the people living paycheck to paycheck, or, you know, lost savings.
Thank you. The only, I have one request. I don't know if it's for you or Mr. Barrett. If someone could send, and if you already did, I didn't see it in my email, the balances of the CPC, I'd just be interested in looking at that. I can ask offline if that's possible. If someone said they sent it out, I didn't see it, if they did.
The city auditor has sent it, but I will make sure he sends it again.
I'll take a look. If he has, I'll get it. But thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so Counselor McMiniman has made a motion to approve the transfer from the unallocated CPA fund to the Community Housing Fund, the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Oh, I thought I was on mute. I'm not on mute. Okay, it is. John T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Chairman Darcy, do you wish to vote?
Sure. Chair votes yes.
Five in favor and unopposed, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you very much. And Counselor from Tappala Road, I'm assuming you're gonna make a motion.
I am gonna make a motion for the second portion needed to complete this entire transaction. And that, in the communication from the auditor, that motion would be, I move to approve the funding of the mayor's application for one million dollars from the Housing CPA Fund to, to be used for emergency assistance with the provision that a minimum of two hundred thousand dollars be reserved for applicants at the fifty percent area median income. That's my motion.
On the motion, discussion on that motion for the committee. Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Durkey.
Yes.
Counselor McMiniman.
Yes.
Counselor Paz.
Yes.
Counselor Stanley.
Yes.
Chairman Darcy, do you wish to vote?
Sure, the chair votes yes. Sure, the Chair votes yes.
Uh, by a vote of five to zero, the matter carries, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, there any further matters for the long-term.
If there are none, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Counselor McMinim has made a motion to adjourn. All of us in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, we've adjourned at 9:23. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselors. The City Council will now reconvene and come back from recess. The Walton City Council will come back from recess. This being a council committee council evening, thank you to the members of the committees. While the clerk is, uh, putting together the, uh, committee reports. As City Council President, I hereby appoint the ad hoc committee for the Kevin Emretzio Award to the following Counselors, Counselor Harris, Counselor Fossey, and Counselor McGlaughlin. Is the clerk ready to read the committee reports? Okay, if the clerk would just unmute and begin with committee reports.
Committee reports. Committee of the whole recommends approval of an appropriation totaling 237,904 for the purchase of furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the Moody Street Fire Station project.
Vice President McMinim moves the action, the committee to be the action, the council roll call.
George A. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn. Karen Dunn. Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the matter with regards to 237,904 to the fire station.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Madam Vice President.
Madam Vice President, would you ask the clerk to declare the vote on that matter that we just voted on, please?
Yes, would the clerk just declare the vote as taken?
I had 13 in favor, none opposed.
Uh, point of order, was there somebody absent?
I did not hear Karen, I did not hear Counselor Dunn's response. I don't know if she's still with us on the line, but I, I did not hear her voice.
Well, therefore, therefore I, I challenge the, the tally. I would like to hear the tally reworded, please.
The tally is 13 in favor and unopposed. That's what I said. Counsel, the council president did not vote, and I did not record a vote for Counselor Dunn, so it's 13 in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Vice President. Clerk will continue with the next committee report.
The Committee of the whole recommends approval of the mayor's request to go forward with a purchase and sales agreement regarding the property at 89-91 Maple Street in accordance with the terms set forth in a communication to the City Council dated April 9th, 2020.
Vice President McMinim moves the action committee to be the action, the council roll calls required.
George A. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn. Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
Clerk would declare the vote, 13 in favor. None opposed. By your action, you have approved of the purchase and sale agreement, 8991 Maple Street. Clerk will continue with committee reports.
The Committee of the whole recommends approval of the mayor's request to go forward with an agreement to purchase the UMass land and buildings on Beaver Street in accordance with the terms set forth in a communication to the City Council dated April 9th, 2020.
Vice President McMinim moves the action committee to be the action, the council.
Let the record reflect, uh, excuse myself.
Let the record reflect, the Counselor LeBlanc recuses himself with regards to this matter. Vice President McMinim moves the action committee to be the action, the council, roll calls required.
George A. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn. Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc is recused. Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
Yeah, wish the vote, Chair votes yes.
13 in favor, one recused, one not responding.
By your action, you have approved of the matter of the agreement to purchase the UMass land and buildings on Beaver Street. Clerk will continue with committee reports.
The Committee of the whole recommends approval of a financing transaction totaling $3,420,000 towards the $17,420,000 acquisition cost of the UMass Field Station and farm property.
Vice President McMinim. Let the record reflect, the Counselor Randy LeBlanc recuses himself with regards to this matter. Vice President McMinim moves the action committee to be the action, the council, roll calls required.
George A. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn. Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc is recused. Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
Yeah, wish the vote, Chair votes yes.
13 in favor, one accused, one not responding.
By your action, you have approved of the matter with regards to 3.42, uh, 3.4 million towards the UMass Field Station. Clerk, continue with committee reports.
The Committee on Long-Term Debt and Capital Planning recommends approval of the request of the Community Preservation Committee to transfer 251,109.45 from the Undesignated CPA Fund to the Housing CPA Fund.
Counselor Darcy moves the action committee to be the action, the council, roll calls required.
George A. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn. Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley. Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have approved of the Community Preservation Committee.
It's 13 in favor, Mr. President.
13 in favor.
Committee, I'm sorry.
Clerk, continue.
All right. The Committee on Long-Term Debt and Capital Planning recommends approval of the request of the Community Preservation Committee to fund the application of the mayor for $1 million from the Housing CPA Fund to be used for emergency assistance with the provision that a minimum of $200,000 be reserved for applicants at the 50% area median income.
Counselor Darcy moves the action committee to be the action, the council, roll calls required.
George A. Darcy III.
Yes.
Karen Dunn. Sean T. Durkey.
Yes.
Kathy Ann Harris.
Yes.
Joseph P. LaCava.
Yes.
Anthony LaFosse.
Yes.
Randall J. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Christine A. Mackin.
Yes.
John J. McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Kathleen B. McMiniman.
Yes.
Patrick J. O'Brien.
Yes.
Jonathan Paz.
Yes.
Thomas M. Stanley.
Yes.
Carlos A. Vidal.
Yes.
By your action, you have a clerk will call the, uh, count.
That's 13 in favor, none opposed, Mr. President.
By your action, you have approved of the, uh, $1 million communication from the CPA.
Those are all of the committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, that, uh, being the agenda for the Walton City Council for the evening of April 13th, 2020. You know, I want to take this opportunity just to say I miss seeing all your smiling faces here at City Hall, but I want to thank you all and continue to encourage all of you to stay at home, stay home, adhere to the Governor Baker's executive order, and stay healthy, stay well. I speak to you not only as City Council President, but as a, a local feeling director. We've lost a number of, uh, neighbors and our friends who have succumbed to this terrible and terrifying virus. We hold all the deceased, their family and friends in our continued thoughts and prayers. And, uh, I wish nothing for the best for all of you and the citizens of Walton. Stay home, stay well, and I hope someday we can all be back in the chamber again to tackle these tough issues. That being said, the wish of the committee with regards to the City Council for the evening.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
On the motion by, uh, Vice President McMinim to adjourn, on the motion to adjourn, all of us in favor say aye.
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 Opposed or object? There being none, the Walton City Council stand adjournment at 9:34 PM. Thank you all, Counselors, have a good night.
Take care, everyone.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.